I used to, about twenty years ago, that was the forty-niners. All right. All right, are we ready to go over there? Everybody sat, perfect. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to everybody here as welcome to everybody who's hopefully watching this at some point on the Internet tonight. I am Mayor Mark Landman and glad to see you here to this joint meeting of the Catati City Council and the successor agency to the former Catati Community Redevelopment Agency. And this is for Tuesday, May twenty-second. I am joined on the dais by Vice Mayor John Delasso, Councilmember Susan Harvey, Councilmember John Moore, and over here on my left, we have City Manager Damian O'Bid. We have City Attorney Robin Donahue. We have City Engineer and Director of Public Works Craig Scott. We also have Vicky Parker, our Community Development Director, as well as Norm Veloso, our Administrative Services Director. And I believe hiding back there, we have John Paul Harris, a senior planner too, as well as Chief Parish, who's always back there. So very good to see you all. And with that, I'm going to ask our Deputy City Clerk Lauren Burgess if you could give us roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Mayor Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
And I will show Councilmember Skellman is absent.
Thank you for that. All right, it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask, we have a representative from Oliver's here, Mr. Scott Gross. Mr. Gross, would you be kind enough to lead us tonight? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that brings us to item number four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions in order to introduce and/or adopt it under this agenda. And this is an action item. Do we have any changes or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. I think you are a hair faster. We have a motion from Councilmember Harvey and a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And seeing none, that carries. And this brings us to announcements. Bear with me while I read a few announcements for us. And I'll begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees and new viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, the city of Catati has special open office hours Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of our Catati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Catati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business in the city. Next, the Ronert Park Catati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library dot org. The Catati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00, and Saturdays as well from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., as well as by appointment. For more information or appointments, please call them at (707) 794-0305. The 2018 Catati Farmer's Market Opening Day is coming Thursday, June 7th. We invite everyone to come enjoy farm-fresh produce, hot food, and live music every Thursday from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at La Plaza Park through August. And of course, the city offers a variety of recreational programs for all ages. You can see the details on the web at cataticy.org. And citizens interested in receiving City of Catati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That is N-I-X-L-E dot com. And we have listed next under Presentations, an update by our Sonoma State Representative, Ms. Priseno, but I don't think I see her here tonight. So that's a very brief update, and that moves us to item seven, which is approval of the final agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. O'Bid?
No proposed changes.
No changes, thank you. And with that, we move to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And I have no cards tonight, so I'm going to see if anyone wants to speak. Ms. Alderman?
George and I were going to initially boycott this meeting. You can tell there's absolutely nobody here because you again have agenda that is all about you and all about what you need, not what the people want. First item I want to talk about is weed abatement. Damian gave incorrect information, dictated it to the community voice. The, it is in the city code, you have this, and it was vicious of him to do that. He was not, he did it in spite. It is in the city code. The Fire District cannot, uh, take responsibility for weed abatement because the Catati city codes are more stringent than the rest of Adobe One, Adobe's jurisdiction. They, we've been over this and over this. And for, you ignore the law like you've done so many times. How many laws over two years did you, next door building codes, did you ignore? This is the black side of your, of the city, that you don't, you make these nice speeches, but you don't deal with the realities. You, how you treat people and how you don't do things. It's very dark and it's very sinister. And Damian did that out of spite. But Mark Landman, he can get, um, he mentions the legislation that two weeks ago, that about, it's about clean energy that's on the agenda, and he gets it on the agenda item. We've been asking for two years for weed abatement. We haven't been able to. That's how much you value us. That's why the public isn't here. They know they don't, it doesn't matter. You should have heard when SSU was here for the dispatch, all those people were like, you guys don't listen. And it's, it's terrible. You do, you, you have so many unanimous votes with, going exactly what the city staff says. Damian shouldn't run the city. You guys should be leaders, not followers. And you're not being. And I'm just really tired of it. And I think that's it. I'm going to come back for consent.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Beric, would you like to speak? Please approach.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's Councilman Beric. I've tried to get the council to recognize my official title. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the council meeting tonight and all of our friends and taxpayers and citizens at home who are watching in tonight. I remember back in the day when these meetings were lively. They were diverse. There was a lot of people here. There was coffee in the back of the room. There were some cookies. There was actually some intelligent debate and discussions. Not anymore. I think Lori Alderman is right. You have shamed the town. People don't come out anymore. They don't have confidence in your leadership. They know the deck is stacked. When I was on the city council, I had multiple complaints at the city council and the city manager's office did not return phone calls, did not return emails, did not answer complaints. I had to hand-deliver their complaints to the city manager's office. I mean, it was quite a circus back then. I would like to remind the council that for some time you've asked the city manager to find out what's going on with Comcast Channel 26 and why is it that it's a Ronert Park channel and that Catati does not have its own public access channel? No bulletin boards, no announcements? Because, in my humble opinion, it's because you don't care. You've never cared about Catati. It's always been about power, retaining power, stifling opposition, silencing the opposition in your Soviet model of government. It's quite shocking. We've lost a generation of kids that never had a recreation department because you put city salaries over the recreation department and you fired Terry Dutra, our recreational, recreation department head, took that budget away to make sure you kept all the salaries and benefits nice and fat. And we were talking about the police chief at the last meeting and how there's no confidence in the police chief within the police department anymore. It's completely dysfunctional. I got no response. And the fact is, I would advise you to go on some police ride-alongs. I went on four ride-alongs when I was on the city council, and I got an earful. I think that's the best way for you to get a feeling of what's going on in the police department when the police officers, um, level with you out on patrol, or what's going on when the cameras are off and the microphones are off inside the squad car, and find out what's really going on. Because we're going to, we're going to lose more good officers if this police chief or this so-called police chief, this embarrassment, continues to work here in our town. Thank you, folks, and good luck tonight.
Mr. Beric, did you want to speak on consent tonight? There's not going to be much later, later. Ms. Alderman?
Okay, the first one is the Falletti Ranch. It seems really that, how can you approve it two weeks ago? You've had all these things, and that comes on the list? That you had the agreement going back months. This was all planned. Why did you even vote on that? When it was, the agreement, obviously, it's how you guys do business. You put it on the agenda. You have a contract with, you know, within two weeks. The Catati Village test vesting tentative map. You guys use CICA, which is California. And you say that there is no difference in the environment. Yes, there's a big difference. It's now in the federal critical habitat of the tiger salamander. And you keep doing the maps, using the state law, and not dealing with it being federal. And that needs to, I don't know, and I have, I know you spent, our, our tax dollars last year to do this extension. I don't even know if that's correct. It's from 2003 or something. The tax, before the, that's the year the tiger salamander became endangered in the California and the federal. And now you wanted 2018? You want to have a map that's, and the map was based on, one of the maps I got and looked at was, had Jerry Bandard out that property out of the critical habitat when I looked like a year ago. That was used in the report. So you need to go back and really deal with the environment of the critical habitat. You have to deal with the feds. It's not going to just happen. And seeing progress on it is not what I want to see with all this happening. And then, I think that's it. Sewer, um, just reminding that you're, um, you're letting, you're getting, you're doing these little things, but you want to still spend a 4.1 million or a 3.6, sorry, million on a sewer project. And you're sitting here wanting to get people in here because of $60 charges. It's wrong. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Did you want to speak on consent calendar, Mr. Beric?
Yes.
Please approach.
I'd like to speak on consent item A. I can't understand why the city is proceeding with any contract regarding Falletti Ranch, any amusement park, any farm restoration project, historical site, whatever you have planned. I attended one workshop regarding this potential project, this money hole. And there were so many unanswered questions. We were promised there would be a follow-up workshop that we would try to narrow down the scope of this fiasco in the making. And there's been no other workshop. I've offered my email address. I've offered my phone number. There's been no follow-up workshop. But we're, here we are with a construction project to do something out there regarding the building improvements, when there are so many questions involved. Last meeting, you voted on the project even though council admitted that they would like to hear what some of those objections and those questions were from the workshop. But no time for that. Let's just vote on it. Let's roll the dice. Let's see what happens. What looks like is going to be millions of dollars possibly spent on this project with no parking for tourists, no parking for buses. Neighbors to the, to the, to the, to the, adjacent to the park complained that this is not fit for the neighborhood. There were a slew of questions. And what are we doing with the contract here for professional services with Mo Engineering to provide project managing, management, and inspection services for the Falletti Ranch Building Improvement Project? It's, it's absurd. What is going on? Who is hijacking the process? This is supposed to work from the bottom up, from the people, through committee, through workshops, to the council. You do it the other way. You have the Soviet model down from the top down. And it's not right. It's not what Catati's about. If the public knew what was going on here, had an understanding, they would be outraged. You'd have no outreach to the citizens regarding these projects. There's no, there's no advertising in the community voice or anyplace else. Nothing on your Facebook page. You want to keep this on the down-low, keep it secret, and, and railroad it through. And it's just, it's astounding.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beric. All right, last call. Would anybody else like to speak on citizens' business or the consent calendar? And I'm looking, and I'm not seeing any takers. Very good. We're closing that and moving to consent. We have items A through E. Does any council member wish to pull any of these?
No.
Nope. Do I see that? I am looking for a motion.
I make a.
I think she had to jump on you tonight. She was leaning more.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar items A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll second that.
They're working on you tonight.
No, yeah, that's fine.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And seeing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to direction and future agenda items. Do we have anything from the council tonight? No?
No, maybe next time.
Very good. We'll wait for that. All right, that takes us to our regular agenda. And the very first thing is approval of Oliver's Market 30th Anniversary Celebration Event in La Plaza Park, as well as associated street closures. And I believe, I'm not seeing Ashley, so it looks like, Mr. O'Bid, you're going to be presenting this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will be Ashley tonight for you. So, as you mentioned, this is the proposed approval of Oliver's Market 30th Anniversary Celebration Event in La Plaza Park. And Oliver's Market opened in 1988, so they're celebrating 30 years in business this year, but more specifically even in business in Catati this year. So they're looking to celebrate this milestone, and they'd like to host a community appreciation event and believe that La Plaza Park is the perfect venue for the proposed community event. And it's proposed for Saturday, September 15th, 2018. And the event coordinators, which are here tonight, are requesting permission to use La Plaza Park, including the bandstands and some right-of-way surrounding the park on the plazas, the plaza streets on both sides. The, um, we expect that there will be, per the application, live amplified entertainment, animals, and inflatable jump houses in the park, food truck and other vendor sales in the park, and alcoholic beverage sales. This will be free of charge for the community to enter and is intended to be family-friendly, taking place from noon until 5:00 on that Saturday, Saturday the 15th of September. And the only other thing I'll add is that the applicant has not requested any fee or charge waivers.
Very good. So I'm going to look at the council and see if we have any questions for staff on this agenda item. Seeing none, I'm going to open to public comment. And I'm going to start first and ask if the folks at Oliver's would like to speak, if you have anything you want to present or say first. You don't have to, but sometimes people have something they want to say. Maybe we didn't cover something in our report. If you'd like to, you're welcome to come up, and so everybody else can hear that first. See, Mr. Gross, I'm putting you on the spot. Not once, but.
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong team here, but the only thing I heard in the agenda was an inflatable jump house that I believe we're not going to move forward with.
Oh, well, that's it then, I'm sorry.
That was it. And this is some of our first times here, so we're going through the motion, trying to learn and be a part of the process. And thank you for your time. And we're, do the best to answer any questions, concerns, so that's about it.
Very good, thank you. All right, well, we're still in public comment. I believe I saw Ms. Alderman's hand.
Although Oliver's didn't request it, every other festival that has been free to the public this, um, this year has been, the fees have been waived. And they're expecting like 300 people, and I think it was $1,500 for the fee. They're spending like $500, $5 a person just to give to the city for, for the, and it's not fair. I mean, if you're with the Chamber of Commerce, you get free. If you get, if one of your pet projects, you get free. But Oliver's, who's brought so much business to our city, they don't get fee waives. They don't get, they have the full charge of, full charge of the police, full charge of all this, which isn't fair. It's just not fair. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. And I'm seeing Mr. Beric. Please approach.
Ms. Alderman is correct once again. This is the example of sticking it to the man, as we used to call it. So pleasantly. I'm very, very surprised that Oliver's wants to celebrate anything in Catati after what the city council has done to them. Now, these nice people here are probably too young to remember, but when Steve Moss and Tom Scott came before the city council some, what was it? Some six, seven, eight years, six, seven, eight years ago, wanting to build a beautiful mixed-use development down here near the freeway, $18 million project, bringing jobs, bringing commerce, bringing goodwill, catching all these consumer dollars coming down the freeway that could turn off and come into Oliver's for quality service and quality products that we're all so familiar with. Tom Scott and Oliver's brought forth a plan to the city of Catati, a beautiful downtown roadway plan that would accommodate their big trucks, their delivery trucks, because they could not navigate those trucks around the world's smallest roundabouts, probably in the United States. And they even brought out a video showing how their trucks could not maneuver around the size roundabouts that the city had planned without tearing up the center of the roundabout. It was an astonishing presentation by Mr. Scott. And basically, the city council and the defunct Diane Thompson, city manager, she basically said, "Well, if you don't like our town, maybe you should take your business elsewhere." Words to that effect. It was one of those moments in Catati history that are not easily forgotten. Quite an embarrassment. No surprise to me, Mr. Scott and Mr. Moss are not here tonight, because I don't think they could stand looking at you people in the eye after what you did to them. So they moved their new store up to wonderful, beautiful Windsor. And the rest is history. And the unmitigated gall of this city council to act like they're so high and mighty and in good graces with Oliver's Market is just ridiculous. You should be ashamed of yourself to have had any part in, in that project and supporting the city council and basically telling Oliver's, uh, tough luck. Take all those jobs. Take all your carbon footprint from those jobs. Take all your, your produce and your, and your goods, and get them out of our town, and we'll find somebody else. And what do you have now? High weeds and blight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beric. All right, does anybody else wish to speak on this agenda item before I close? Public comment. This does bring up an important question. Mr. Gross, you are not planning any roundabouts of this event, are you? Good, I think that works good for all of us. All right. I'm going to bring it back to the council, see if you have any questions or comments.
I do have a couple of questions, if I may. As far as I understand, Oliver's is not a nonprofit? So you are a for-profit? And all the other fees that were waived for park events were for nonprofits? Significant difference.
Well, I.
I'm not talking to you.
Actually, the speaker was incorrect. The Chamber of Commerce, who the, who the city partially funds, had fee waivers, but none of their events did this year, that I'm aware of.
But, but any of those events that have requested those have been nonprofits?
Including nonprofits. This year.
And I don't believe Ms. Thompson told Oliver's to take their business to another town. I'm pretty certain that that didn't happen. And I, I just think it's great, and congratulations to you guys for being around so long and prospering.
Anything else from the council? Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, I just, again, I don't, I'm not one of those that lives in the dark side, and everything that comes out of my mouth is, you know, just fire and brimstone, and the world is coming apart. And I try not to, try not to dwell on the past. I will say that it's great that you guys have been here 30 years. I was here when the city gave Oliver's a $500,000 grant, is not the right word, but loan maybe, to expand into Bonanza. I've been around that long. You can tell by looking at me that I've been around that long. So I just want to congratulate you guys, and I'm looking forward to that event. I will definitely be there spending money, so thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I'm excited that you're having this event. I too have been around for a long time, and I remember when Oliver's was teeny-tiny. So I'm glad that you've been here 30 years. I hope you'll be here for another 30 years and am actually. I hope you'll be here for another 30 years, and am actually looking forward to attending this event. I hope that it becomes a more, that it works for you guys and will be a more regular event, because I think that the one thing about our community is the sharing and the community. So hopefully, because I know you guys are big on community, that we can have more of these on a regular basis. That would be really awesome.
I'm just going to agree with my councilmembers here. You've put together what looks to be a really nice event. I like the work that's gone into this. It looks like it's going to be a good one. That's a great addition to what we offer every summer. Have to congratulate you again in 30 years, that's a big milestone. And we look at where Oliver started and look where you are now, that's absolutely great. We love seeing homegrown success stories in this town. We have a lot of them, you're one of the major ones, so good for you. And I'm very grateful and pleased to see you hosting this here in Catatti, because like you, I see a lot of sense in that, and it's a great location. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to the council and see if anybody has a motion for me.
I'm going to attempt to jump in in front of the other councilmembers this time, and I'd like to adopt a resolution approving Oliver's Market 30th Anniversary Celebration, including the sale of alcoholic beverages on public property, amplified music, and the temporary closure of certain public streets.
I'll second that.
All right, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And that passes unanimously. Looks like we have a new event this year. Congratulations. All right. So with that, let's see, that takes us to our next item, which is 11B. And this is a discussion of California Senate Bills 1088 and 998, both from Senator Dodd. And I think City Manager Obed, you're going to kick this off at least?
Yeah, so I'll start the discussion. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So these are two pending bills in the state legislature, in the state senate more specifically. And SB 1088 authored by Dodd is...is a bill that's, at least in its current form, although I understand as we get into discussions, there might be some changes to it coming. But one of the identified issues with it is it, is that it could potentially affect what's called distributed energy resource programs, which our local CCA, Sonoma Clean Power, as well as other CCAs throughout the state, utilize both for jobs and for job creation locally, as well as distributing power generation and storage throughout the grid, as opposed to the older model of large, you know, regional power plants. So it adds more resiliency to the grid, and it's generally a direction that, that the CCAs and power generation's going. So we'll talk about that. The other one is SB 998, also authored by Senator Dodd. And this bill would prohibit an urban and community water system, which would be like us, municipal water provider, from discontinuing residential service for non-payment until a payment by a customer has been delinquent for at least 60 days. And basically what it does is it extends our current delinquency period, it would extend our currently, current delinquency period from 14 days to 60 days. And we already have programs in place, like I think virtually every other water provider to assist customers that are delinquent. And our normal billing cycle is, you know, we'll have the reeds, and then there's usually 14 to 15 days before the bills go out. And then there's another 30 days for the customer to pay the bills, and then the first late notice goes out, and then there's a week, and then there's a delinquency notice that goes out, and that's another week. And then, and then there could be shut-offs at that point. But like I was starting to say, we do have programs to assist people who can't pay, including something the council authorized a couple of years ago, which is a bill reduction if there's a large water leak or something like that, some sort of unexpected event that resulted in a single large water use in a billing cycle. So we already have those, but this bill would extend the delinquency period from four months to six months. And in effect, what that would do is it'd shift costs to other customers as the utility carries the cost of the delinquent customers. And I think despite maybe its good intentions, it's not, it ultimately isn't a great idea for people that have trouble paying their bills, kind of like a credit card. If you extend it out, it just gets more and more expensive, and you have the next billing cycle, and the next billing cycle on top of that, and it just makes it harder and harder to pay over time. So for a lot of reasons, at least in its current form, we don't think it's a great direction to go, and it appears to be, in our view, solving a problem that really doesn't, that doesn't exist as well intentions as it appears to be. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm going to see if you have any questions for staff. I have a little more background on going to 1088, because number one, it's a complex, difficult one to unpack, plus it's a moving one with some pieces that actually just changed as of today. So first, I'll see if anybody has any questions for 998 from staff? No? Good, that's a clear one. So quick background for 1088. On surface, looks to be a very good bill. It basically looks into a new way of approaching safety issues vis-à-vis the PG&E system, the investor-owned utility electrical grid, and certainly around fires. I think we all have sensitivity to that, the value in this last year's. Unfortunately, problems cropped up that in any complex bill, there's always things in there that create issues. And one of the things that's in there that create issues were two issues that would hamstring CCAs. And this, interestingly enough, was written by the same person who helped draft 2145, you might remember from a year or so ago. The whole county was against that, too. That was basically very problematic for CCAs. So to make a long story short, the most notable one, the worst problem that would have removed essentially any CCA up and down the state from being able to be involved in distributed energy resources, this is things like community solar, battery storage programs for customers, even the little grid savvy program we have with EV chargers that you can kind of control the rate of charging. So if there's a potential blackout, you can reduce the demand just a little bit. Very small, but if you think if you multiply that across the whole state at a certain point, that's something powerful. Here's the benefit of all cities working together, having the League of Cities, having the mayor's and councilmembers. After discussing this and having a motion to send it to the next mayor's and council members meeting to oppose this, unless amended, I learned just late this afternoon that Senator Dodd has removed, agreed to amend that piece. We're still working on the second piece. This one is much less problematic, but basically in the long term, in the next few years, anywhere from three to five years, it would tend to put us in a position that customers, like for example in Sonoma County, CCA customers anywhere actually in the state, could wind up potentially paying twice for reliability issues. And we believe this can be remedied by a simple addition of pointing out that, and I believe there's some verbiage for it that I have somewhere here in a paper, but basically to make sure that CCAs, if they've already purchased reliability options, making sure they've paid extra, making sure there's extra power if people need it, that we don't double those efforts and then double bill those customers. And I think we can probably get some language in that, so I just wanted to explain that. I can obviously answer any questions deeper on this, but I think that bottom line, roughly 90% of our customers are in a position where they, down the road, might additionally pay some extra, they really shouldn't need to. So it would probably be worth supporting a very polite oppose unless amended for that last remaining issue. And that is modifying section 2899.2. And I do have some language I can share with staff for that, that literally just came out this afternoon later. Anything from the council on that? No? No? Not right now? Very good, we'll hold on to that. And open it up to public comment. Ms. Alderman, please.
This is the item that Mark Landman asked for two weeks ago, and of course, it's now on the agenda. And I don't know why we just had a, the city manager gave his report, and then we hear another report from Mr. Landman before even public comment. It benefits his, it's not a legal conflict of interest because of some public something, but it is an ethics issue here, that he is a pay consultant for Lean Energy USA that supports things like Sonoma Clean Power. And here he's, in their legislation, and this is getting discussion on legislation about clean places like Sonoma Clean Power. There needs to be a line. And you guys, and it doesn't seem to be happening. There's an ethical issue that you just need to start. I'm tired of Sonoma Clean Power's commercials. And there's, this shouldn't be brought up at this point. It's not relevant to the city and what's happening. I got a lot of things, people talking about weed abatement this last week, of how you have all done it, but no, we're talking about this stuff. I had complaints from lots of citizens directly to me, because they knew I was making a difference. And you're sitting here breaking ethics, conflicts of interest, Mark Landman should be excusing himself, not adding on before the discussion. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Beric, anything on this one? Very good, we're going to close public comment and bring it back. Anything from the council? That's right. Councilmember Harvey.
I'm glad to hear you say that Mr. Dodd has agreed to make some changes. I was going to wait till the council reports, but I attended the League of California Cities' North Bay Division meeting last weekend, and Mr. Dodd was there, and he explained that, you know, as you pointed out, there's lots of bills out there that have lots of things in there, some are good, some not so good. He said that he really needs to hear from cities if there are things that have unintended consequences in the bills. He said oftentimes, he said, "There's stuff in there," and, you know, he says, "I'll take responsibility if I vote on it," you know, that there's some good things and bad things in there, "but I need to hear from cities if there are things in the bills that might hurt us, or he needs to be made aware of, or, you know, we have concerns about." He welcomes hearing from us, and he said he really does need that input, and he made a plea with us, all the cities that were there to please, contact his office, send letters, send, you know, so that they know where we stand in the issues that we have with some of them. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, that follow-through on that, that he is listening. So yes, it does impact our city, and yes, he wants us to send letters to him if there are aspects of things that may impact our constituents. So I'm glad that we're looking at this.
I would agree. Ideally, that's the way the process should work, that's the whole point of amending things up and down the line. And, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth in this, just up till the other day, there was an unwillingness, but I think this is the beauty of having all players involved. It's slow, it's painful, but by the time you hear enough from a stakeholder to legitimate concern, son of a gun, last week he wasn't, this week he's ready to move a little, and that's good. It makes it, that helps the senator, and it helps us, so I think that's a very good thing. So with that, I would be, oh, a comment right here, please, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Very brief, thank you. I had a lot of concern with 1088, so that is great updated information, but the 998 one, I mean, it's, it wouldn't be like the end of the world, but it does seem to put, my interpretation was it seemed to put an unfair burden onto the rest of the ratepayers who are paying their utility charges on time. And so I do have concern with that, and I don't know, I guess, I really didn't understand what the original intent of that bill was outside of the cities are pressuring people to pay their bills on time, you know, I couldn't, it wasn't registering with me. So I don't know if there's any clarification on that, but it's kind of a moot point, but I guess with that, you know, I would be interested in sending a letter to Senator Dodd that, you know, our concern is such, you know, that we would address that issue.
John, anything?
I'm just curious, who's writing Dodd's bills?
You know, I have the name of the, for the energy one, I neglected to jot it down, but I can get that for you, because I did find it interesting, the same person did 2145. And they're actually, from the perspective of the interests being put forward, they're very well-written. So there's that. But yeah, speaking, I would agree with the concerns about 98. I do think it's very well-intentioned, and I bet it's based, remember, senators have such a wide area they're responsible for. It's not one city or even a county, it's a wide area, and he probably has some areas where he sees a need and he's trying to fill it, but perhaps he's unaware that in other areas, perhaps even more areas in this district, it creates unintended consequences that are more problematic than the problem he's trying to fix. And so again, this is the process, and this is why we do this, and have our representatives that serve these various committees then report out, so we can all do this, because this is how even a city as tiny as Catatti can help tip the scales and make things go, hopefully, a better way for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, as you, as was explained, we have a process, and we follow a process, but not all cities may do that. So the fact that, you know, we have a process and everybody's treated this way, and this is, this is how it works, that may not be the case everywhere, and this may be trying to fix something like that, where there isn't a set process by mandating it at the state level.
Well, I know the good news, after not having any traction, or not having the ideal traction we looked for from the senator's office last Friday, the town of Windsor's already sent a letter on 1088, Cloverdale's talking about it tonight, I believe, and I think Sebastopol's going to be looking at this June 5, probably a couple other cities will put it on, so. So there's that. So those are the two things, we're requesting motions for the city manager and mayor to authorize letters of opposition, or at least a letter of opposition unless amended, certainly on 1088, I think is appropriate now. If the council's in agreement, I'd welcome a motion on that.
I would make a motion that the city of Catatti authorize the city manager and mayor to issue letters of opposition to Senate Bill 1088 and 998 on behalf of the city, unless amended, to remove key concerns.
Motion, do I have a second for that?
Second that.
And Vice Mayor seconds. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. Very good. And this takes us to item 11C, and the subject is a resolution of intent to approve preliminary engineer's report for landscape and lighting assessment district levy and collect annual assessments, and set the time and date of the public hearing for the Catatti landscaping and lighting assessment district for fiscal year 2018-19. And I'm going to welcome Mr. Craig Scott, our Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's item is the annual proceedings for the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, which last year were 10 individual districts, and we consolidated them, so it's one district with 10 individual zones, and each keeping their original characteristics and their balance sheets are kept and tracked separately still. And the advantage there is we get to have one engineer's report instead of 10, and one resolution instead of 10, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking to, we realize the administrative savings this year in simplifying the process. The 10 original districts were formed between 1989 to 2003 to cover costs for new development that wanted nicer lights and landscaping and so forth, sort of above the standard. And the first six zones were held without any adjustment, and then zones 7, 8, 9, and 10, the last four, were allowed to adjust the annual assessment by the construction cost index for San Francisco. So that's discussed in the engineer's report. These are the 10 different zones that are out there, and this is where they are geographically, pretty spread out. It'd be, it'd be good to refer to this in your packet as we go through the zones, just to familiarize yourself with where each one is. Okay, the engineer's report covers sort of each zone, section, has a description of the zone, what the maintenance scope is, and then summarizes the actual expenses and revenues for 1718, and then it goes ahead and looks at what the projected expenses and revenues would be for 1819, the year that we're asking for assessments to happen. And it keeps track of the reserves. So reserves are there because it's unrealistic to think you're going to get within the penny on utility costs, labor costs, everything else, so you have this reserve. And the reserve also gives us an opportunity for unexpected expenses, like trees dying and needing to be cut down, or improvements as things wear out and renewal has to happen. In Zone 1, Valparaiso, Vista, the, there were three pine trees that were dead, and there was a safety issue there. was a safety issue there. And so the expense of that came from reserves up to a point, and then $1,000 was required from the general fund as a loan, which is, would be paid back over time. Zone 2, Quail Hollow, there's a stretch there along Myrtle Avenue. And so in 2016-17, we completed a renewal of that landscaping. And so in 1718, this is a very, very resource, you know, it doesn't have many resources. It's fixed and reserves. And so what we saw this here was a jump in the irrigation utility, the water cost. And so that was to get the plants established. We might see 1819 be still pretty high. And then as, as the plants get more established, that cost come down. As it is now, they have a deficit each year, which, which requires a general fund loan. And then once we get to that point, it could be over 10 years to pay that back. There is, there's some, I mean, it's a beautification on a, on a very visible corridor, which, you know, is a consideration for, for us putting that investment into that area. Some, there's, there's not really much going on here. It's, we try to balance out the revenues with, with the expenses to, to maintain the landscaping there. I think same thing with Macklin. Macklin does have a stretch along Myrtle Avenue as well. And so they incurred costs in 1617, capital cost to do the improvements. And it's a much smaller area and they have a, not, there's not the water you impact in, in that zone. Sierra Meadows is only for streetlights, there's no landscaping there. That's just what that picture depicts, is the light, light post. Oak Knoll, just try to keep that thing maintained, steady state. Garden Gate, there were no capital improvements in that zone. We moved to Zone 8, which is Park Meadows, McGinnis Circle. And we are allowed to increase by the CCI. What we see here is what landscape and lighting assessment districts were sort of more intended to be, where the fence gets regularly maintained, the landscaping and the mulch is replenished on a regular basis. Last year's engineer's report, we had a, we introduced a capital project. They have a piece of the light, citywide lighting and landscaping, lighting project. And the way the schedule is going, it was ambiguous whether we're, we're going to catch any expenses before July 1st. And so just to be conservative on the reserves, we put the cost in 1718. But what's likely going to happen is it, it's going to go into 1819. And so this is just a snapshot of what the budget is. The reserves are shown to go negative, and so there might be this temporary loan from the general fund, but really by the end of 1819, that would be back positive territory. So it would just be a cash flow kind of a situation. There are six, six streetlights that would be installed in this zone as part of that for $30,000, and that would come from that zone's reserves. Centera Way, so the, the city in the zone initiation documents is on, is responsible for maintaining the park. And up to this point, the HOA has been managing that. And so staff has initiated discussions with the HOA, and they're, they're very open at this point to scoping out a project, getting in an agreement with the city so that those bills come to this landscape assessment district. And so as you can imagine, the reserves have been building over the years. It's about $62,000. We would like to, with the annual expenses, about $3,400 coming against the fund and some needed capital projects, that reserve would start coming down, down a little bit. So it's not like this year, it all has to be reconciled, but we have initiated those discussions and where, where the city would not be involved in the day-to-day landscaping decisions, and which they have been managing very well. We would just, the costs would be passed on to the assessment district. Okay, so Altman Acres, we're just looking at landscaping there. And, well, we got landscaping and some lights in that district. Okay, plant improvements, as we talked about, pathway lighting in Park Meadows, it's kind of a review. That's what I talked about there for the Park Meadows zone. Here are the proposed assessments for 1819. You can see the, the first six, one, one year's 1718 is the same as 1819, then you get down to seven, eight, nine, and 10, and we're having, we track a maximum assessment. So you take the CCI from the inception of the zone and what it is today, and that's what you could charge without it going to a protest vote. And we're, we're still well below, it's good to track that, just see what you're able to do. But the proposed assessment is still well below those, those amounts because some years were skipped. And it's just some, something that we use our judgment on. This year, all four were proposing to increase by the three and a half percent adjustment. Okay, this is just a snapshot of what happens to the reserves for 1718, so what it was about a year ago, and then what's projected to be on June, or on July 1st. So when we do the calculations, we have, our administration department has a detailed cost, whenever somebody works on a zone, they charge their hours to a specific zone or allocate it if it's a general benefit one to all, across all zones. And then we, we have the last three months that we prorate it, just to get, try to get our actual year to, to a full 12 months. Park Meadows is showing the negative, that's just that cash flow issue I was mentioning before. There, there were loans that were required to, to keep the, the reserves zero or positive. So I just wanted to put a table together showing where the loans are going and the expected payback. So they're fairly small amounts, and we hope to keep them that way. There are really very little tools in our toolbox to, to reverse the slide for Quail Hollow. It's, it's like $1,200 a year, $30 or so per household. It's just not a lot of revenue. Okay, so with that, we're just looking for the council to consider a resolution, as the mayor mentioned at the beginning, which is to state the city's intent to levy landscaping and lighting assessment district assessments and to accept the preliminary engineer's report. And importantly, set the date for June 12th to have the public hearing and then vote on the assessment of these rates for 1819. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for staff? Please.
On Centera Way, does that include the little courtyards too, or only the park area?
Just the park area. Once you get into people's courtyards and front yards, that's...
The HOA takes care of all of that.
Yes, that's more the...
So it's just that big park area there?
Correct. And, and the playground is included.
Well, such as it is.
Yes.
It's not really a playground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Structure, right?
Yeah. So hopefully we can do better than what's there. I've seen, you know, some of these smaller apartment complexes on East Cotati have much more significant play equipment for their children than Centera does.
Vice mayor, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. In Zone 8, Park Meadows, I don't recall if the lighting district, I, I assume those are always streetlights, but I didn't, I wasn't clear if it included the light related to that bridge that crosses over the Laguna.
It, it does. The, the, the bridge is within the district and as well as this open space area where there's a pathway that goes across the open space. To the extent that some of the lights are outside the district, we've, we've been very careful with the plans so that those are powered and the electricity bills are paid for elsewhere, not out of that district. The district will only be paying for the lights that go within that district, that there's six. After having said that, I think the bridge lights are, are outside.
I kind of...
I think they're outside. Yeah, there's six lights that are included and they're more on the pathway. So I decided to correct myself there.
Okay. No, that's why I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the report, Mr. Scott. You know, it's funny, I've been sitting, watching this for some years now, and we've been noticing obviously the dilemma. We have some districts that are tied to rolling costs and those do fairly well, and we have others that aren't, obviously, over cost of living changes over decades that put them in a difficult place. And I, I keep wondering if there's a way to get to someplace where we could correct those ones where those oversights were left at some point. And I'll give you an example, Oak Knolls, the, the city manager and I have gone around and around for years. This is right over in Christensen Court. And it's, it's very modest, they don't pay much, and it's a very modest landscaping. And obviously, there's lights involved too. But even though they only pay, say, $133.50, I believe is the charge a year, and there's regular maintenance work, the result probably isn't really to the level that I think that most people would really want. I look at some of the areas that aren't bound this way, like over by, where the new lights are going in by the creek, by the Laguna, and you can see the difference in terms of vegetation, management, infrastructure, fences. If there's a way for us to get there sometime, even if, you know, give the community the choice if they want to. But I think that perhaps many neighborhoods would be happy to have a minimal upgrade or at least go to a rolling cost if we could maintain things better for them. Just a suggestion, maybe we can get to that point at some time. Because we've been doing the same thing over and over. And I appreciate, I think staff's really put a lot of efforts to wring the most they can out of this. But clearly, it's difficult. You're trying to get blood from a stone here at this point with some of these districts. That's, I think, what I wanted to say. With that, I'm going to open it to public comment.
I might not be understanding this completely well. The, this is an extra charge to, to certain places for the lighting. And you're talking about safety, weed control, offense, landscaping. How is that related to lighting? I know from way back when, when telephone poles with lights on them, you need 10 feet clearance. It looked like you were doing weed control for whole streets for these lighting ones. Why are you charging for weed control? That doesn't make sense. It should be just for the safety of the lights and any weeds around the pool. I, I know because there was the electrical, the temporary electrical pole and next door for 18 months, that you have to have a 10-foot clearance around a telephone pole or anything. And I had three feet weeds and I begged you for weed abatement or nuisance or anything for three months. I eventually had to call Cal Fire. Why, if it had happened over on this side, because there's no lighting districts, would you have dealt with it? Because it was in a lighting district? It's just so uneven of how you do this. And why is this, all this other services related when it's just, it should be just about lighting? People can, you can get contractors for weeds and stuff that, for a whole heck of a lot less than probably what you're charging. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Barich, you speaking on this one tonight? No? Very good. We're going to close public comment and then bring it back. Any count, any questions, comments from the council? You're thinking. Mr. Obit, did you want to comment? These are not just lighting districts, they're also landscaping districts. It's easy to miss in this, but, so they're responsible for maintaining, in some cases, planning, but certainly upkeep and numerous small districts in a lot of neighborhoods throughout Cotati, all those little different areas, almost all of them have some small chunk of that.
When the subdivision is set up.
Exactly.
Nothing to do with individual city properties and individual ownership, homeowners.
Yeah, that's exactly right. As new...
Subdivision sets the...
As new subdivisions were created, they were established concurrent with the subdivision map. And it's manicured landscape areas and lighting that's associated per the state statutes, which are the things that are allowed in that type of district. And it's, right, so it's pretty straightforward, you know. The one, the one thing I will say is that it, when the, when the, the thought that I was going to say that I paused on momentarily, is that when the subdivisions are established, the developer at the time could, you know, with the city, depending on what the process, depending on what the decision makers were saying at the time, could establish a lighting and landscape, or a landscape only, or a lighting only, or both. In most cases, it's both. The one exception in Cotati is Sierra Meadows, which is Oretzky, which just has lighting, but for no other reason than there's no common area landscape spaces.
Very good, thank you. All right, bringing it back to the council, if we have no further questions or comments, I'm wondering if we have a motion for this rather long subject matter.
Give it a shot?
Yep.
Okay, would like to adopt a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, approve preliminary engineer's report, and set the time and date of the public hearing for June 12th, 2018, for the City of Cotati Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for fiscal year 2018-19.
I think you got a brownie point for getting the June 12th in there too. Nice, I saw our city attorney smile, very nicely done.
I'll go ahead and take the glory for saying second.
There we go. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, with that, that carries unanimously tonight. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Scott. And this takes us to regular agenda item D. And this is a discussion and direction to staff, as well as our representative, on the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And let's see, Mr. Scott, it looks like you have double duty tonight. This should be an easy one, this, these usually go very easy.
Sure. Okay, so you're talking about complicated items. This is, all right, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The Groundwater Sustainability Agency was formed in response to state law requirement, and it was formed back in April 2017. The GSA has been meeting for half a year at least, the board and the advisory committees, and moving right along with, with what it's tasked to do. At that time of inception, it was the member agencies, which are the cities, the Sonoma Kenny Water Agency, the Sonoma Resource Conservation District. There, there were nine original member agencies in total, formed a JPA. And that comes into play in tonight's item because there's certain expectations set in that JPA. The member agencies, for example, were to fund the first two years, the startup costs, kind of the gap funding for this agency with that time being used to develop the rates for the 85% or so of the county that actually uses and benefits the, from the groundwater. That's the rural and agricultural areas. And at this point, we're at a juncture where there are five policy issues that we need, would like to discuss so that, and provide direction to our board member on, for representing the city at the GSA board meetings. And there has been some discussion at the, the latest board meeting of, well, let me back up. So one of the, the two... board meeting of, well, let me back up. So one of the, the two major accomplishments, initial accomplishments that this GSA is to do is to, one, set, to perform, complete a rate study that will provide a revenue source and take the weight off the backs of the member agencies for, for funding the GSA moving forward. And the second is to, to prepare the GSP, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And that, that's twenty twenty-two that that gets done. Okay. So in, in this discussion, it, it, it sort of is contrary at odds with what's in the JPA because the member agencies are like, okay, we've got the two years where we're funding it, and then that's, that's enough time for years three, four, or five for it to become sort of sustainable and for the cities to become, be reimbursed for those startup costs. Okay. So the first, the, the five are, are listed here. First policy item to, to consider is, is foregoing the near-term reimbursement of their initial contributions. The city has split equally. I mean, Santa Rosa is much larger than us, obviously, but it was debated and debated and we thought, we're all collectively that it's more important to start this agency on an equal footing and then get with the reimbursement. So for a city like Katari, it's disproportionately large. We've, we've got a fifty-five thousand dollar contribution the first year and a sixty-four thousand contribution the second year. If we were to just let the state take over, our costs would be about four thousand dollars a year, for example. And then on the worst case, it would be twenty thousand. Now, there are other implications to the state taking over as the, these faceless, well, bureaucrats in Washington would make these decisions for us in our basin and without any thought to, you know, the impacts to, to our economy and, and whatnot. So there are other, other implications to what, what a dollar amount we would pay in fees to the state. Okay. So the JPA pretty much has a statement in there saying the intent is to have the, the member agencies be reimbursed or, you know, as, as the finances can tolerate. And so the first point that we would consider is that the cities could do to ease the financial burden of the rates on their rural areas is to push that off a few years. Okay? And we'll see what happens there. The second is to fund an additional three years of costs. That is, okay, we've paid fifty-five thousand, sixty-four thousand. Would we consider paying similar amounts for years three, four, and five? The third item is to establish rates based on groundwater use. And so this is going, we're seeing the results of the rate study coming forward, and it's proposing a, a rate based on groundwater use. Talk about that a little bit later. Item four is to drop a partial fee or tax from further consideration, and I'll talk about that later as well. And five, options for GSA administration services moving forward. So just keep in mind, those are the five points that we're, we're going to drill down into at this point. Okay.
Told you this was coming.
So foregoing reimbursement. Okay. Staff does support this if it's proposed by, at the board, by, by the board. And we see this as one way to lessen the burden on, on the, on the rates and, and provide for more likely, you know, successful scenario. For example, here's, here's where, as written, we get reimbursement. You see that line there that's highlighted in yellow, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of expense to reimburse the nine member agencies. And so at the bottom highlighted area, you've got the revenue requirement for the new rates of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's what we would try to get from, from the rates. The second scenario is if we, the member agency said, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll give a few years for the reimbursement to happen. And it has a dramatic impact on the revenue generation need. It goes from, what did we say? Say five hundred and seventy thousand a year to two hundred and forty thousand. So that's much less of a burden in these early years for the new rate payers to, to pony up. Okay. So if offered, we'd, we'd support, the staff supports foregoing that reimbursement. It's not giving up on it. It's just putting it off a few years. Okay. The second item from that original list. Okay. We're not supporting adding, continuing to provide this sole source of funding through member contributions. I think I, I made the point earlier that it was, you know, disproportionate to Katari to pay this amount of money. And then it's written into the JPA that's just the first two years. And it changed to add any additional contributing years would actually require, wait for it, a unanimous vote of the JPA for that change to happen. And so that, with, with that requirement, it would be a very likely scenario that the state would come in, you know, because it would take years for something like, like that to happen. We've seen in the past. That's a very onerous process. Also, putting off, this, this, this is coupled with saying, or, you know, going along with the argument that others are making that, hey, why, why do the rate study now? Let's wait till after the GSP, the plan gets prepared and, and impose rates then. Why, why do it twice? Why not just do it once? Well, as we've seen with our own utilities here, it's necessary to revisit rates every two or three years. It's just because conditions change, assumptions change. And so it's, it, that's kind of a false economy. You're not saving any money. You're just losing that revenue stream. And what we're seeing now is the rate study has made tremendous progress. We've got an early jump on it, and the recommendations of it are, are just coming forth as scheduled now. So why, why put a halt to it? Keep, keep it rolling. It would make it very, it would make it really difficult to impose rates later, is, is our argument, because the agency's more established. You guys have been doing great. Why, why are you asking for rates now? I mean, it's a very easy argument to make now because we're just starting the agency. We need a revenue stream and we're going to get, getting, getting established. So it's a very easy argument to make now for rates, but very difficult in the future. Okay. And then that last point is just, it, it is an undue burden on the city that, that those, if it all falls back on us. Okay. So here, here's a, a graph or a chart that just demonstrates, hey, if it did go to the, the state to take over, their fees at the very low, low, low end, where they just kind of stay out of our business and, and, and charge us at the low, hey, we're, we're, we're doing okay. We're just going to leave you alone. That's, they'd be generating over seven hundred thousand dollars, probably more like a million dollars a year. And you saw from that other chart, we're looking at between five hundred and seventy thousand and two, and two hundred and forty thousand. You know, it's a fraction of that. And so that's, that's a very good message to folks out there in the rural areas is that this is a much more cost effective. If, if, if we manage it ourselves, we're only looking for two hundred and forty thousand dollars instead of a million dollars or more. Okay. All right. So now we're moving into point number three, policy item number three, which is one of the conclusions of the rate study, the recommendations of the rate study, rather. We're, it's, it's saying the most feasible way is to do a, establish rates based on groundwater use. And so it's showing, hey, your benefit, this is a certain property owner, a certain property is benefiting from what this GSA is doing because you're, you're pumping water at a certain amount. So it's, it's, it's a very clear-cut way of spreading the benefit to the, to the users. And so for the, for those, like, like the City of Katari, that measure and have metered, you know, have metered water pumping, we just use the metered water pumping. And then for rural well users or those that do not have metered pumping, it would be based on an estimate. And so it would be kind of a mix of, of, of using the meters when you have them and using an estimate when you don't. But, you know, it's, it's spread more equitably among all the beneficiaries and not just on the eighteen, you know, the, the, the folks that use fifteen percent of the resource. That's how it is right now. Okay. So that, that's number three. And then number four, the other options that came about were to impose a property tax or a property fee. So a property tax, the, the consultant concluded that it was not feasible, not practical, because to put the ballot on, put the measure on the ballot, you'd have, it'd be about over half a million dollars, which is kind of counterproductive in this whole thing. That's, that's two years worth of funding we're looking for and to blow it on a ballot measure. So we're looking to not recommend, to, to just drop the, the property or partial tax from the options. And then the other one is a partial, parcel fee, which there are, it, it's explained better in the staff report, but there are some problems with that, legal problems based on a case that was heard. And so instead of going down that road where it could potentially be challenged, just don't, don't go there. Okay. And then the final point, I have a policy item number five. We've had for the first six, eight months or so of this GSA, the Sonoma RCD, it's, had volunteered and gotten in a contract with the GSA to provide the administrative functions, putting out the agenda reports and, and making sure that the meetings are advertised and everything else. And they have withdrawn from that role. And the Sonoma County Water Agency is holding that role on an interim basis right now, and they're making noises to hold that role sort of in perpetuity. And this is kind of a moment to say, hey, stop, hold on. Let's think about if that, what that person, that role needs to, to, how it should function as. And it should, I, I think our staff's recommendation is that, that administrative function should be held by somebody that's impartial. That's not going to be weighted too much one way or the other to any of the member agencies. And so we're looking for discussion, direction, again, on whether to have the water agency take this role on or to put out potentially an RFP and get a third party, just someone outside, not involved, to come in and perform that role. That is kind of a quick presentation on it. The details are in the report, but at that point.
So they always send you the easy ones, huh, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Well, with that, I'm going to open to the council for questions, but I'm going to start with Councilmember Harvey. This is her area of expertise. I'm sure she has, can shed some more light on this and might have some comments to illuminate us.
I hope that we can take these one at a time because I think it's easier if we discuss them one at a time. Ones that kind of go together are the removing of the flat parcel tax and the rates based on groundwater use. Basically, we, we were presented with, one, two, three, four, five different, well, actually, six different, oh, seven different options for consideration. The parcel fee, the parcel fee plus a fee based on groundwater use, a parcel tax, fee based on groundwater use only, a fee, a hybrid, you know, kind of.
This isn't getting clearer yet.
It's not clear, no. And then continuing contributions from agencies and state intervention. So those, they just kind of threw out there. Here's, here's the realm of possibilities. And where we're at right now is, the bottom line is, none of them are very pretty. So a couple of them have legal issues with them. Some of them need to go to the voters. That's why the parcel fee, parcel tax, the parcel tax has to have a two-thirds vote requirement plus it's about five hundred thousand dollars, you know, to put it on the ballot. As we all know, it's hard to get two-thirds. The parcel fee and parcel fee with groundwater use-based fee, those are problematic because there was a court case in San Buenaventura that was decided that they couldn't do a parcel fee for this because it was not fair and reasonable to the benefits received. In other words, having a parcel, a flat parcel fee for each one, some people get more water than others. And so that was deemed, that was that case. So that kind of ruled out those, those couple. And then fee on groundwater use, which is, what's in here is recommended by staff. Yes, that's a possibility, but we don't know some of the detailed usage. So that's where this other one comes in about using estimated because, as was pointed out, some people have meters, but most people don't have meters. So there'll have to be some form, a form of, you know, estimate on that. So those kind of go together. The deferral is kind of related to the whole funding in general. As was pointed out, you know, do we need to collect a lot more because we have to pay people back now? Or can we collect less and, you know, start paying once the plan has been put up? Those are, you know, we, we would get our money back, but it's like now or later. There was a lot of discussion around the ongoing fees paid by the member agencies and what was brought up by actually the two county representatives, one for the water agency and one board of supervisors, is they felt that the way it was done where it was equal was really unfair. And I agreed with that. I said, you know, it would be really almost very difficult for us. It was very difficult for us to pay an equal share, but we needed to have a seat at the table to represent our constituents. So we were willing to do that for a couple of years. But they felt that it should be, you know, more based upon number of users, not necessarily everybody. If you want a seat, this is what the seat costs. So that, that was discussed a lot, but again, no recommendation, final recommendations were made. A staff pointed out, you know, in, in their discussions, because they've had further discussions, that while those comments were made in that meeting, that may not be where everybody's at.
Mm-hmm.
So you kind of know how, how that goes. And then as far as the administrative services, we were all kind of surprised that, you know, Goldridge, that was their contribution.
Right.
So that kind of puts a little kink in that because that was paying for their amount. So if they're not going to do those services, that becomes, you know, that's going to become problematic for them because they didn't have the funds to begin with. So they were kind of doing in kind and they don't want to do that. I think that I agree with the recommendation that, you know, you, you kind of want someone working for the board. Unfortunately, if we have it through the water agency, that, those people, their employment is by the water agency. So they will be beholden to who does their paycheck. And, and understandably so. So really, if you want it board-directed, it should be independent. The, the rub for me is until we go out and see how much that costs, it may be cost prohibitive. Because as we all know, because we sit on, you know, many JPAs, the cost of the executive director could, you know, be something that we can't fund. So those are kind of my two cents on that. And I'm happy to answer questions, but I really do think we should take them one at a time.
What I'd suggest is I'll see if any of my other colleagues have any questions specifically about the presentation. We'll open up to public. We'll open up to public comment. And then when we bring it back, we can just round robin, go through the five proposals that staff, and I assume you're basically, you and staff have a similar opinion in these proposals. I'm taking that from your comments.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all, it never hurts to check.
Yeah.
And that way, we can all see where we lay on that. So anything further for staff, any questions right now before we have public comment? I'll open it to public comment. Mr. Beridge, no? Ms. Alderman, no? We've got, this may be officially the driest subject we've ever had, and it's about water. There we go. All right, we'll bring it back then. Who'd like to lead off and just, and obviously we'll open to other comments or questions if you have them, but it might be, as Councilmember Harvey suggested, just go through one through five and see what our reaction is to the proposals from our representative and staff.
So.
I'll jump in then.
There you go.
All right. Usually I'll go last, but everybody was dragging the feet. This is an easy one. I tend to agree with most of the directions here. I would prefer to see the, in number one, delaying the reimbursement. Obviously, I'd prefer not to, but I think the flexibility is a good thing to have here, particularly knowing that the JPA is not exactly designed for flexibility, giving you a little to work with, I have no problem with. I would agree very strongly on number two is a strong no. I really just would love to understand the motivation for this. Is it an election year concern? Is it a recognition that there's an imbalance that's perhaps beneficial for some particular entities? Because I just don't really see clearly here in the stated reasons why that's worth doing because obviously, but the negative is very clear. So that's an easy one. That's a strong no. Three and four, those are okay. Those are logical. It seems fine to me. I get, certainly for number four, the challenge we're going to have picking some way of making this work financially, but those do seem to be outliers, so I would be okay with that. Number five, I'll spend a minute on because I felt strongly about that. I think you've all heard me many times say some very positive and glowing statements about the water agency, both their leadership and their staff. And I'll say that again, I think very highly of them. Having said that, I do have concerns with them essentially running this enterprise. That would be problematic. I think you really want impartial people, not folks that are direct employees of a couple of the board members. I mean, I just imagine if they would, Mr. Obed and us as a board in charge of doing this. Now, I think we do a very good job. I think we try and do our absolute best, but we really have always be in tune with and understand the needs of everybody in the unincorporated areas. We would be open to that, particularly if it impacted some of the concerns we know that our people have. That could be a challenge. And I do feel that in the run-up, in the early part of this, when we were putting together this particular JPA, I was, I felt the thumb was on the scale a little bit in the way the water agency handled some of that. I was not pleased with the way some things were pushed through where there was a lot of things were precooked and some cities were kind of ignored. That sounds stronger than I mean it. But bottom line, the process was not as smooth as it could have and should have been with the expertise that have. So I just cut to the chase, and I feel very strongly, that's the one I was underlining like this? Absolutely not. That's a problem. And everybody can see it. That's just not going to work. This is what always happens. The supervisors have the water agency that gives them two seats at everything, and then that makes it difficult for people to come to the consensus we need to get to. So that's my take on the five. Who'd love to jump in next?
I'd be happy to go, but I guess I assumed we were doing one, I thought you literally meant each of us talking about number one, each of us talking about number two.
That's okay.
You've changed the flow, which is right.
Of course.
Did you get that? Did you change the flow?
You know, if we, if we start getting strongly into one, we can stick there and swim around there for a while, too.
Anybody hear that? It would change the flow?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, you're not impressing them.
Whatever. Let's move on. I'll make it simple. To me, yeah, number one seemed to make a bit of sense. I mean, you just kind of, we're putting it off is what we're doing, but I think that's certainly an appropriate move in this case.
And, you know, I will, I will expand. Sorry to interrupt you for a second. On number one, it's, it's really just to, I think, allow the, our representative, Councilmember Harvey, to have that negotiating flexibility.
Flexibility.
Yeah. Rather than just throw it on the table on day one, but.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. I totally agree with that. Again, I'm just going to try to breeze through these because I had written them down. Number two, I was not in favor of doing that, so I would say an absolute no to that. Three and four seemed fine. Four, I was a lot, it seemed easier for me to swallow that pill, just because I think, two reasons. One, there, you know, the fact that there's some legal issues with the parcel fee, I didn't think, you know, do we really need to, does the agency really need to tackle that? And I'd say no. And with the parcel tax, it's like, yeah, good luck. So let's not, let's not even go there on that one. And with that last option, wasn't quite sure. I think what I heard from you, Mayor, was no to the water agency. That's kind of what I thought I heard.
For administration services, for option five, that would be my take. I would agree with it. I think it's problematic.
Right. So I have a little switch on that. The way I kind of wrote my answer was that it should be held by a third party that's impartial.
And I think that's what staff recommended.
I think we're on the same page, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I think, I think so too, but yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if there was any kind of difference here, but direction-wise, it's a similar statement. So that's it for me.
Mr. Moore.
I would support the delay in the reimbursement on number one. On number two, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to fund that, or why there's such a resistance to fund that over five years when, if you're looking at groundwater sustainability, we're looking out, you know, 100, 200 years on this, and that initial cost. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not, you know, I'm going to die on the sword on that one, but if, in looking at the larger picture, I mean, unless you've got something that.
Well, we probably could talk a little bit more about this one because one of the possibilities is, is that they come back and they, and they, some of the larger entities fund a larger amount. We don't know that.
Okay.
But as was pointed out, that takes it, which, which vote, that, that's what's so crazy about this JPA, the different level of voting, that would take a unanimous vote, that one. So that's the stickler there is, so it could be proposed, but all it would take would be for one no vote. So let's just, for argument's sake, say that, you know, most of the cities, their amount would go down, but there may be one city that their amount goes up. And certainly, the county and the water agency have already acknowledged that they think theirs could be more, but that one city could vote no, and then you don't have the unanimous vote. I mean, that's sort of.
If that unhappy and unpleasant occasion occurs and there's some status, cities and county representatives sitting there, you could remind them, there was one voice, one lonely voice saying, this is not a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, no, it wasn't one lonely. There were a bunch of us.
Yeah.
We all agreed, said this is, and it just managed to get through, but now this is what we have to work with.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, it, it really, the voting ends up being pretty, you know. So part of what might happen with this one is it might come back and they might have a lesser amount, and I don't know how people, I don't know how people feel about that. So let's just for.
It'd have to come back.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking, it would have to come back.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, tonight isn't necessarily the end of the discussion. It's just the place we're at right now and getting some initial direction on which way to go. It could be that, I mean, as, as an initial step, just finishing the rate study and just seeing what it actually says. And that may adjust our thinking as to what is the best course moving forward from that point. But right now, it's just, you know, we don't, we're recommending to not really entertain the idea of additional three years right now until we get through the rate study process and see what that says. And then maybe we can talk about it again.
So that we don't lock into it when we may not necessarily have to.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I think that it wasn't proposed that way in the meeting, but staff is hearing different than what, what I was hearing. They, they're hearing that they want to stop the rate study and, and just do this instead. And none of that, and I went back over all my stuff, and none of that was said in the meeting, that they would stop it, you know, do that and just move forward. So who knows where that.
Take us back to item number five.
Yeah. Who knows where that came from and how, how much traction it'll get? Because some of those things, as we know, you know, take on a life of their own.
Yeah. And I think, I think the thinking right now is that as, as long as the, you know, sort of the collective group is still pushing the rate study to its conclusion, that's in everyone's best interest. If we open up the discussion of, let's, we'll talk about, there's the, there's the voting issue that needs unanimous vote, which will probably kill that discussion anyway, but it just ends up, if the, if the conversation gets off on this, you know, member funding for future years, it could just kind of bog down the whole rate study thing and delay it. And I don't think that, the thinking is that's not in anyone's best interest at this point, that we should just get the rate study into its draft final form, and then if we need to have further discussions about year three and whatever, we can have it at that point.
So I would support a no on that one.
So.
So number three, I would support a yes on that. Number four would be a no. And number five, I have some concerns. If you have, and I know that maybe they put their thumb on the scale, so to speak, but if you have an agency that does water, wouldn't this be right up their alley? And then, and then you wouldn't necessarily have the cost incurred of having a general manager of a JPA at 150K a year plus benefits, and then it's $5 million a year and, you know.
This is very true, but I think our experience in the run-up to the JPA was very clear. There's a lot of power in setting the agenda, in being the staff, a lot of things. We noticed in discussions, we had great negotiations, we reached certain agreements and things, we went away and came back a month later. And we got to item J, we were told very happily, oh, we got to G, so now let's start talking about J. So we had to argue our way back to that. And by the time we finished doing that and had to start the new arguments, it was like, oh, you guys already talked too much. We'll move on to this new thing. It's, that's a hard way of explaining it, but it isn't just, if it was just somebody to give you an engineer's viewpoint and water, you're right, it's a world-class outfit and you can't do better.
And we do, we do have the staff doing that, that technical staff doing the technical piece. But your point is correct, that we don't want them driving the whole thing. I mean, we were all pretty surprised at what we saw, because we didn't think that this is what we were going to get. So again, that comes from where that staff was, you know, directed to go.
And there's no harm in doing an RFP.
Yeah. And like I said, the RFP could come back and it could, you know, we might go, ooh.
Could we have others and, could we have a group involved in the RFP that just isn't water agency staff?
Well, I think that they would put it out to a more, you know.
I'd like to be able to let everybody's staff involved take a look at that RFP and give a thumbs up on it if it goes out, I think would be a best practice.
Okay. Um.
So, okay, then I would support the request for an RFP there.
May I ask Councilmember Moore a question?
Please.
When you were going through your responses, I thought you said a no to number four, which that was to drop the parcel tax.
Oh, so that would actually be a yes.
I'm going to recap, yeah, I'm going to.
I just wanted to double-check that.
That's what you meant.
No verbiage.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying.
Do you want to look at the.
Double negative.
RFP.
So I think you've got kind of direction from us. Anything else you want to go over here?
Well, I just kind of want to re, because the guesses and nos, as you pointed out, are double negatives.
I think what I'm hearing is pretty much the, it was agreement, yours and staff's recommendation.
Yeah.
And some of us leaned heavier on some items than others, but we're all leaning in the same direction generally.
So there was, that's the way I'm taking it. There was no dissension from what was recommended.
Not after the final discussion.
Okay. So more to come, and we may have, again, the funding and stuff may, you know, one of the thoughts that I had on the, you know, who knows what may happen if the RFP goes out, you know, one thing that, that may ultimately could happen is it could be rotated. You know, sort of like, you know.
Well, pressure certainly creates, well, maybe you will create a diamond. Who knows? Somebody has to come up with something, so anything's possible.
Yeah. Okay. So I think I have my marching orders.
Very good. Thank you.
It was loads of fun.
Great. Thanks.
Very good. So that brings us back, that closes our regular agenda and brings us to our city manager's report from Mr. Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's the part I've been waiting for. All right. So just a reminder, Memorial Day is next Monday. City Hall offices will be closed and observance on Memorial Day. And I wanted to give the council an update on the Sonoma State dispatch testing that we've been doing. And we are in the testing phase every Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And this is a comprehensive test of, of all the IT stuff. So the radios, the business phones, as well as the new Sonoma State University phone tree to intercept non-emergency calls. 911 landlines, 911 cell phones, 911 blue light, not from Kmart, but the fixed ones, they're on the, like, parking lot, right? Computer aided dispatch, CAD, that's the, what the dispatchers use to send information to officers. The GIS mapping, which is the new mapping of the university, they're a new member to the consortium, to the JPA, and so they had to have a map created of their, of their jurisdiction, so to speak, so that any agencies in the consortium would have that available to them when they respond, you know, in mutual aid and assistance. And then, and then the, the one we all know and love, CLETS, which is the California Law Enforcement Telecommunication System. This is driver's license checks, warrants, and so forth. It's the system that all of the police agencies use. And we anticipate by mid-June, we'll be dispatching full-time, 24/7. Everything's going well, so that's all looking good. And then on the recreation updates, on Thursday, May 10th, we co-hosted an Energizer station at the Smart Train Station for National Bike to Work Day. During the morning commute, we saw over 70 people cycling to work or school. About half of them stopped to pick up information at the Energizer station, which was one of 20 Energizer stations throughout Sonoma County, who collectively served, it's been reported over 1,200 cyclists. Results from our parks master plan, the community meetings are available on our website now. We're currently working on draft concept plans for park improvements, and we'll be presenting, presenting them to the planning commission and city council in early summer. So that's moving along. And then we're also excited to be offering a new beginning Pilates class at the community center on Wednesday evenings at 5:00 PM. So our master Pilates instructor, Darian Gold, was trained by one of Mr. Pilates, Joseph Pilates, for people that know him, owned premier disciples and has over 20 years of experience as an instructor. And this class is suitable for all abilities. And this is, for the people that are really into Pilates, this is mat Pilates as opposed to reformer Pilates, in case anyone cares. And then summer camps begin on June 4th, and registration is open online. The camps offered during the first week include Camp Cattati Day, Spanish Immersion Camp, Taut Sports Camp, Willy Wonka Theater Camp, Musical Theater Madness Camp. So sign up now to ensure your space. And then we're also actively planning for the 26th Annual Cattati Kids' Day Parade in Celebration. We're booking vendors and accepting parade entrance now, and we're also looking for volunteers to help before, during, and after the event on July 14th. And this is a great way for high school students to earn volunteer hour credits. So if anyone knows any high school students that want some hour credits, get in touch with Ashley. And also, they can, on the more altruistic side, give back to their community in this great event. So we're deep in preparations for that. On June 22nd, we're kicking off our first Summer Movies in the Park event, and we'll be showing Despicable Me 3 in La Plaza Park. Something that was one of Robin's favorites. This event is free for the whole family, and will be approximately 15 minutes, start at 15 minutes after sunset. And to register for classes or more information, you can visit our website or call Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or awilson@catatcity.org. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Steve Carroll fan, huh? Good to know. Any questions for the city manager? No? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Obed. That brings to city council member reports. And I'll start over here with city council member Moore.
Back to last city council, I was indicating that we're having some increases in our general liability and our auto liability. And for the 18, 19 year on our, on our workers' comp liability, we're going to, with additional surges, to offset losses that were previously not really built into recouping, our cost is going to go up about 31% on there. Some of the other cities have a much more significant increase. Spastul has like a 47% increase.
Harge.
And then on the liability, we've got a 36% increase. And again, not as bad as some of the other cities. the other cities. Our closest neighbor to the north has a 94% increase in their liability. So the structure is in place now to replenish those, subsidize those for a few years amongst the cities in an appropriate percentage, and then at that point, keep the funding at the appropriate level as we go through, because there was years when there was things like dividends given back and things like that, that really should have been kept in reserves, and the cities, under financial duress, certainly welcome the dividends, but in a fiscally prudent approach, that's not necessarily the best, and so we're kind of paying for it now, but I think we'll be out of it in just a few years. And then, of course, the self-funded medical is doing great, we're sitting on a $3 million reserve right there, so that's doing really well.
I like that you ended with the good news.
Yeah, and that was it for my reports.
Councilmember Harvey, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, I attended, as I said, the League of California Cities North Bay Division meeting, which I spoke about, that Senator Bill Dodd and then Dan Carrick, the Deputy Executive Director of League of California Cities, they both talked about, you know, different things. They said that it's going to be a wild ride for a little bit, we're gonna be getting a lot of stuff, you know, heading down the pike, so we really kind of need to pay attention, and some things are, you know, maybe not so good for cities, so we're gonna have to keep our eyes open on some of those things.
Is that on a federal level or state level?
State level, yeah, yeah, so I, that was, it was really good and very informative, and a really good exchange. I also attended a meeting on the website changes for the Waste Management Agency, so they're gonna go through a name change and a brand-new website, so that was interesting to see what they're coming up with. Our Waste Management Agency meeting had to be canceled because there were two vote items on there, and we did not have enough people with the new voting requirements to have a quorum, so that meeting had to get canceled. I think because, the biggest thing is because budget meetings were going on in both the county and Santa Rosa, so we ended up having too few members to be able to be available. And that's all there.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
No official meetings to report out on, but I have a question for the city manager, and I was just thinking, before the new school year, I'm wondering if we could get another two-by-two-by-two meeting going, and I have a partial list of topics, but I could put one together, but maybe just contacting owner-park city manager and seeing, you know, tentative schedules down the road. I don't think this needs to be a long meeting, but I think, I think it'd be good for both cities to have a conversation with the school superintendent for the district and just kind of, you know, here are some ideas we have for like the coming year, and I'd be happy to put a few ideas together, and I can send them to you on email.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I forgot one thing.
Let's hear it.
I'm so sorry. One of the other things that was reported was, there was a homeless task force report that was put out, it was done in conjunction with the League of California Cities, the California State Association of Counties, and the Institute for Local Government. I will have Lauren circulate this, and I also gave a couple of copies to Damian, because there are some tools and resources for cities and counties, and there was a lot of work put into this, so there might be something in there that we may be able to utilize. Sorry, thank you.
Very good, let's see, I have one item to report out on, this would be from last Friday, it's Sonoma County Mayor's and Councilmember's Legislative Committee, and it kind of harks back to the challenges you're facing really on the water, the groundwater sustainability board. For years there, we've had a voting arrangement that basically prizes appropriately compromise and togetherness, and it basically allows anybody to be able to cast a dissenting vote on anything and essentially blackball a vote. So you have the option of voting yes if you support, voting no if not, or you have the option, if it's something you don't like, but you recognize the majority wants to do it, and it's time-sensitive, or whatever, you can also abstain. It's worth noting, about roughly six years, I think, I've been there, three as chair, I've only seen a no vote against a strong majority twice. One came up last Friday in the discussion of 1088, it was Mr. Healy of Petaluma, this is the second time he's had a no vote via VCCA issues, and the result was interesting. A lot, a few people actually were unaware, no, this motion didn't carry, because this is the way we do it, and it was interesting to watch, numerous people asked him essentially, in a nice way, very respectfully, said, you know, this will do this, this, you know, legislative matters, if you delay them, and they don't, and you don't get that opposition less amended in time, it's valueless, it takes away everybody's voice, and, you know, you've got six other cities in the room saying, we want this, you're taking our voice away. There was no movement, so it was interesting, I was thinking of saying, maybe we need to revisit our election rules. Before we got out of the agenda item, one of our members already said, asked it, so we're gonna be looking at that our next meeting, and you'll see it come back at mayors and councilmembers, because I believe this needs to come back to the full group at one of our dinners to be ratified. So first you'll see a request on 1088, I would imagine, at our dinner on the 14th, that'll be a much easier one now that the most significant part's been pared away, and then probably at the next meeting after that, we'll be discussing going to a more normal majority rule vote, I believe, so, just a quick update on that. Your problems, everybody shares the same thing. It only works depending on the people you have. It takes goodwill and willingness to work together, and if you don't have that, then it just doesn't function. So with that, we've talked long enough, it is time for public comment. I know you've been waiting out there on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman?
This is on future agenda items. Sorry, I'm a little sleepy from the last topic. The one, I'm getting a lot of emails to me and people talking about, it's on social media and everything, about the city's lack of enforcing and cutting weeds on public properties, on side streets and stuff that, and we may all have PTSD from the firestorm, but it's a big legal liability too, that you have all these, Filetti Ranch has three foot, near the house, you cut down the other, has three feet weeds across from city hall, how does that look? It's, it really, and of course, weed abatement needs to be put on the agenda, we all know that, it is a city, I wish you would look at the facts and not keep putting it off and putting it off. The other is, another thing that's been on social media is the city salaries, and I think you need to have a discussion of, because basically, the city salaries have gone up by a million in the last three years, and the amount of, the amount of employees is close to the same, and so that needs to, it's on, don't give me that look, it's transparent in California, if you want to look, from 2014 to 2017, it went up from 4 million to 5 million, so I think we need to have, and that's a very big topic around, around the city that people want to know about and want to see why, see why have a discussion on that, and it will bring in people, because George and I have been pretty much the only ones here tonight, and it's because you don't talk about things that matter to people, like weed abatement, and city weeds, and city salaries, and, you know, it's, this needs to be addressed in your agenda items, not handpicked ones that you want to do, but ones that are real. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Berich?
Counsel, there was some talk tonight about fire and brimstone coming from members of the audience, and it sounded like it wasn't appreciated, and I want to remind you what it was like when the public could speak for five minutes during these city council meetings. If you remember, there were accolades, there were compliments, there were constructive criticisms, there was a lot, but since you've limited us, citizens, to three minutes, you can bet, we need all three minutes, to bring to your attention some of your failures, your malfeasance, some of the criminal acts, the Brown Act violations, the selective enforcement and so forth, and I'm sorry if it sounds like fire and brimstone for three minutes, but hey, if you limit us to three minutes, you know, we've got a job to do too. Maybe the truth lies somewhere in the middle, but we have a job to do here to bring to your attention, to stop this chuck and jive, that everything is great in Catati, and that you, your hands are clean. That's ridiculous. And if you're going to ever put homelessness on the future agenda, please do it in my lifetime. Mr. DeLloso was kind enough to try to beg the question, to get some support on the council, to bring the issue of the homeless in Catati to a future agenda, and it's failed, it's failed on its face. It looks like Mr. DeLloso's gonna have to wait till he's mayor in order to try to put even more pressure on the rest of you compassionate regressives, but the fact is, you know, this homeless issue is an Achilles' heel on your label as Democrats, okay? I'd also like to find out what you're doing about working with the Rancho Adobe Fire District. We've heard all this, all these reports from city staff, from city council members, oh yes, Mr. Berich, well, you know, we're moving forward with Rancho Adobe on this weed abatement issue. Where is it in your reports? Why can't we hear about it? Because it's not happening. More chuck and jive. Also on Cypress Avenue and West Sierra, you've known for some times, there's this memorial sitting there on the side of the roadway, that, you know, it's become another reminder of the selective enforcement of the city. Nobody else can do this in town, I don't know how we allow all these memorials to be sitting on the side of the roadways and the crosswalks where children and people walk by. You know, where is, where is the consistency with your idea of Catati and enforcing your regulations? There are none. I remember when Measure U was going on, Bill Bartlett, out there on West Catati and Highway 112, he put out a no roundabout sign, and the city manager went and pulled it. Within an hour, he pulled it. Now we see Carl's Autobody signs sitting there in public rideaways, we see memorials to people-
Mr. Berich, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up, I'm wrapping up right now.
You're well over.
Thank you, thank you. But anyway, you take a hard look at yourself here, this isn't going well. Thank you.
And thank you with that. And I'm looking out, I'm not seeing anyone else in the audience, so I think that closes public comment on non-action agenda items. And item 15, do we have any information received after the agenda's posting? Seeing none, that takes us to adjournment at 9:03. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you next time. We are adjourned.